Good evening, everybody. I'd like to welcome you to our September 10th School Board Meeting this time. I'd like to welcome our pledge leaders tonight to conduct our pledge and we'll have our moment of silence.
So Iris, who is in second grade with Mrs. Ayers, and Julia, who's in third grade with Mrs. Williams, are joining us this evening as pledge leaders. So thank you so much for being with us. You can come to this microphone right here. And Dr. Reiner, could you help them maybe get that microphone on? Thank you. And if everyone else could stand and then they'll lead us to the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you so much Iris and Julia. You did a wonderful job.
Mrs. Fausco, help me you're ready.
Dr. Faulkner. Mr. Garman.
Here.
Dr. Green.
Here.
Mr. Gregg.
Here.
Mr. Hoffman. Ms. Patterson. Mr. Reichardt. Mr. Umbriak.
Here.
Mr. Reichardt Jr.
Here. 1.3, August 6, 2025, Special Board Meeting. Board will take action to approve the meeting minutes from the August 6, 2025 Special Board Meeting as presented. Have a motion in a second.
Motion.
Mr. Garman.
Yes.
Dr. Green.
Yes.
Mr. Gregg.
Yes.
Ms. Patterson.
Yes.
Mr. Reichardt.
Yes.
Mr. Umbriak.
Yes.
Mr. Reichardt Jr.
Yes. 1.4 minutes, August 6, 2025, Committee of the Whole Meeting. Board will take action to approve the meeting minutes from the August 6, 2025 Committee of the Whole Meeting as presented. Again, same procedure, motion in a second, please.
Motion. Second.
Dr. Green.
Yes.
Mr. Gregg.
Yes.
Ms. Patterson. Mr. Reichardt. Mr. Umbriak.
Yes.
Mr. Garman.
Yes.
Mr. Reichardt Jr.
Yes. 1.5 minutes, August 13, 2025, Regular Board Meeting. Board will take action, that should be... Board will take action to approve the meeting minutes from the August 13, 2025 Regular Board Meeting as presented. Again, same procedure, motion in a second to proceed, please.
Motion. Second.
Mr. Gregg.
Yes.
Ms. Patterson. Mr. Reichardt. Mr. Umbriak.
Yes.
Mr. Garman.
Yes.
Dr. Green. Mr. Reichardt Jr.
Yes. That'll take us to item two, Board Administrative Announcements to 2.1, Board Recognition. I'll turn that over to Dr. Need.
I'm really excited to welcome Mrs. Hughes this evening. Mrs. Hughes is a business teacher at our high school and also runs our Cooperative Education Program where seniors at Danville High School have an opportunity to learn out in the community. So I'm going to turn it over to Mrs. Hughes who can share a little with the board about this program.
Thank you. I'm always excited when you come around.
Talk in, yep. That would be great.
So thanks for having me again. So I know we have a couple, we might have a couple of new people from when I was here last time. But let me explain our co-op program that we have at the high school. So this is for senior students. And what they can do is they have the ability to go out and work somewhere and also earn school credit. So this year we have roughly 77-ish students out. So I made a little list, a couple of the good things about the program. They gain real-world experience. And I have to say, some of the stuff the kids are seeing at Geisinger, I'm like, whoa. Like, I'd be passing out and everything. It's also a good resume builder. They, they're earning money, which is nice, some of them. And they also do get a lot of good skills. A lot of these kids have never, some of them have never had a job. And so that's good for them as well. So I listed some of the placements. So at Geisinger, I have kids all over the place. Pharmacy, in all of the clinics. So by that I mean Woodbine Ortho, Chrology, Dentistry, all of those places. We also have students out in nursing, radiology, we have a student in the lab. And then two new ones that we have this year are website operations and web design. I have kids in Liberty Valley, middle school and primary. And then you can see the rest of, there's more, but these are most of them. The one I'm really excited about this year is the Emergency Responder Academy. So down at the bottom right, you can read about that. But we have, what that is, is if kids are thinking about a career in firefighting or EMS, most of you, I'm not sure if you know this, but the local fire departments, there's not near as many volunteers as what they're used to be. So we're trying to build that up and get kids interested in that earlier. So currently we have five Danville students and two from Central Columbia. Next year I know there's probably four from Southern interested. Kids from Danville are already coming up with interest in that too. So all of those classes are at the EMS building at Woodbine. And then I put some names of the people. Eric Franz is the one who is mainly running that. But Mr. Gump, Mr. Vee, they all put a lot of hard work into this in the summer as well. So, so does anybody have any questions before I turn it over?
Yes, I do. Not really a question. I had a similar idea years, some time ago. My thought was, you know, you have people in the community, elderly people. Maybe they live alone, whatever, so they have their own home. But people need little things fixed in their home. So you have retired people like myself who have a certain amount of skills from the years of working and owning a property. So if an elderly person needs something small done, whether it's a little bit of plumbing, a little bit of carpentry work or whatever, if they would, I don't know how that would really work, but they say they would say, say somebody, somebody called and said, well, I need my door fixed. My door doesn't close right. And, and I thought about, you know, having, having students volunteer with a mentor to go to a particular home and do, and do that job. And it wouldn't cost, it wouldn't cost the owner anything unless they wanted to give a goodwill donation. So I think the, the blowback on that was litigation. What if somebody gets hurt? So what are your thoughts on that?
Well, so first of all...
I just, I just would want to clarify, sorry, Mr. Umbriak, but the co-op program, what we're giving students credit for is it's like an apprenticeship. So the student is not going out to do car repair or carpentry repair on their own. They're actually going to a place of business that they're learning those business skills in that job. So in that scenario, a student would be volunteering their skills to help someone, but they wouldn't be growing in their skills. So in this work scenario, we're actually, like, part of the skills they're trying to learn in addition to, like, learning how to repair a car is, like, functioning as an employee at Steve Shannon and all that goes into that. So in the program that Mrs. Hughes is running, like, it's an employer-employee kind of relationship. I know I even personally, like, my son is doing a co-op at Geisinger. And so he's learning things that I think could help him in a future medical career. But there's a lot of just even, like, wearing your uniform and reporting on time and office dynamics and those things that are a part of that learning experience, for sure. So in this case, we would want them to be learning the skill, I guess. Like, they're at the point in their development where they don't know how to repair the roof yet. They'd be, like, learning how to do it, if that makes sense.
Well, I understand that. But my scenario is basically they would learn also, okay?
Right.
And they would also learn helping people, helping someone out, you know, doing a, doing a good deed, basically. But what is the difference between someone working, someone going to Steve Shannon and being injured? How does litigation, I mean, how does insurance work in that case compared to what I'm saying?
There are huge, so I think this is beyond the scope of what she's presenting and what she's able to do. But there are huge differences in the fact that large corporations that are bringing people on as trainees have insurance, liability insurance among many other things. Plus they have limited scope of practice, which the students are allowed to do, which have been well-defined not only by Pennsylvania law, but by lawyers internally for each of these individual businesses. So it's a very different thing to send someone to a co-op that has a specific area that's designed for a student to come and learn. And where the product that they're producing is almost secondary. It's more about their educational process than it is about providing a service. And that they're legally covered by the company which is taking them in and allowing them to do this. So it's a very different entity if we were sending these kids out into the world without a business directly being the supervising entity, because the district would be the supervising entity. And there would be the question of whether the district has the expertise in order to do any of those things. Whether they have the liability insurance to do any of those things. And whether we want to expend the money that it would require to put those pieces in place when we have so many other gaps which need a large amount of money. And we have pre-existing businesses which can teach these students a large amount of useful things. So that, I think there are a fair bit of differences which make it relatively non-feasible in a setting which we are currently trying to replace a building and have money that's going to be allocated in all sorts of other places to spend a large amount of money to try to create something when we have you doing such a wonderful job, allowing these kids to have the opportunity to do these things.
Maybe a club idea? And another thing with co-op is these kids go out at the same time, 8:00 AM to 10:00 AM, every single day. So that would, you know, I mean, great idea, it's just not feasible.
Well, certainly, Mrs. Hughes, you do a wonderful job, so thank you.
Well, thank you.
JJ is a leader here at Danville High School, so excited that you're here to present to us as well.
So, hi, my name is JJ Nichols. I work in the co-op program down at Danville Middle School under the advisory of Cory Lombardo to hopefully further the goal of one day becoming an English teacher in the middle school or high school area. I've wanted to be a teacher for years now. And it start, sort of, started with being on course to become a counselor at 4H Camp and developed into me helping out at educational camps run by Ms. Betsy Finn during the summer. And now here during the co-op program. English is one of my favorite subjects. And I really, really think that teaching is a great way to help inspire further generations and help bring them happiness and joy, of course, and help them learn things that they need to learn to get through life. So a lot of what I do is I help out along, around the classroom. The past two days, Mr. Lombardo was out with a small cold. So I was helping with the substitute in making sure that students were on task and making sure they knew what they needed to do. I help pass out things a lot. Today I was helping monitor stations because we had a small brain break station where they were making the little fortune teller things. And some of them were having trouble folding, so I sat with them and helped them fold things. And it's just been a lot of great fun and great experience. And I'm really happy that we have this program that is available to me, that I can show up and do the work.
Well, thank you for being here and congratulations on your desire to enter the greatest profession. So we're excited to have a future educator. And I've had the privilege of hearing you at our poetry slam and know you're a fantastic writer and English student. So this seems like a fantastic career path.
I think it's partly in her blood, too. I had her dad in Mr. Byerschmidt's class many, many years.
Like, four to six years from now, we'll have a slot? You're aiming for the middle school?
Middle school, too.
That's your heart.
I wouldn't want to teach middle schoolers.
Well, Mrs. Hughes, thank you so much. JJ, thank you so much.
I'd just like to say that's a one, I think it's a great idea and I think it's a wonderful thing.
Thank you both.
This'll take us to item 2.2, Appoint CSIU Representative. Board will take action to appoint Dural Reichardt Jr. to replace Sandy Green as the Danville Area School District Representative to the Central Susquehanna Intermediate Unit Board of Directors beginning September 10, 2025.
I just want to say I appreciate you taking on this role instead of me.
That didn't take long.
I mean, I am willing to pass if anybody else would like to take it.
No, no, I think you are the appropriate person to take it.
Sandy wants it back.
That's what you're hearing.
Yeah.
Not for me, you're not.
So I'll look for a motion in a second.
I will motion.
I'll second that.
Hopefully I didn't already burn too many bridges there.
He'll go do cleanup.
Ms. Patterson. Mr. Reichardt.
Mr. Riker. Mr. Umbreak.
Yes.
Mr. Garman.
Yes.
Dr. Green.
Yes.
Mr. Gregg.
Yes.
Mr. Riker Jr.
I guess it doesn't matter at this point, yes.
[laughing] Yeah, I do have that in my super. He just went to the next slide.
Okay, we can go to reports then, and I'll turn that back to Dr. Neat then.
Holy smokes.
Yeah, I have that in super report. Mr. Ryan gave everyone a sneak peek there.
Sandy, you're supposed to bring pizza.
I failed my duties, clearly. I was too busy worrying about the CSIU.
Well, I think, why don't we just pause for a moment and do this? I was going to do that there. But, so we were talking about board recognition, and I would just like to recognize, and there's a certificate from the Pennsylvania School Boards Association, that Mr. Riker Sr. has served the Danville Area School District for 10 years in this.
Holy smokes.
I'm not sure whether to congratulate you or ask you if you've lost your mind, but...
Find his truck doors so he can go home.
So thank you for your service to the students of Danville.
I guess we can go down to reports. CMAVTS, I was not at the JOC meeting last night, Adam was.
It was just committee of whole, just kind of discussing policies and just trying to prepare for next week's meeting. And as far as I know, negotiations were today and still at stalemate, so.
CSIU?
I was unable to attend the meeting because I was in Madrid, Spain.
Okay. EITC? Head Start? Thank you, and I'll take us to CS Trust. Now, we can go to the superintendent's report to Dr. Neat.
Wonderful. Again, congratulations and thank you to Mr. Riker. If you move to the next slide, Mr. Ryan, you'll see our first enrollment report of the year. I did share where we concluded last year and where we're starting the year. Keep in mind that cohorts of students have obviously advanced to the next grade as you're looking at those numbers. So that's where we started the school year in kindergarten through fifth grade. If you advance to the next slide, you'll see where we started the school year with our sixth through 12th grade, as well as our enrollment at CMAVTS. And then the next slide will take you to our non-public enrollment report. We did talk about our cyber numbers last month and the efforts that Danville puts to remain the lowest percentage of outside cyber charter enrollment in the region. But here, you'll see our numbers as of May in each of those categories and where we're starting the school year. If you take us to the next slide, I just want to note that September 15th is considered Suicide Prevention Day, with this week being honored as Suicide Prevention Week and the entire month of September being recognized. Do you just want to just publicly share that 988 is a suicide and crisis lifeline that anyone can dial and receive support on the other end? So if there's anyone here or at home hearing that, just want to get that information out there. Mr. Kissinger and his team have gotten resources out and events out at the middle school and high school this week in honor of Suicide Prevention Week. I have linked, I'll be sharing, these slides are available on our website, and I'll be sharing them with staff and parents tomorrow. The link at the top does just take people to preventing suicide information from the CDC, so we will be making sure that that gets into everyone's hands as well. And then if we advance to the next slide, we did have a long-range planning meeting this evening at 6:00 before we gathered, and just a few of the topics that we talked about, we'll do a larger presentation on this at our Committee of the Whole next time. But if you advance the slide, just a couple of topics that I wanted to just share with the entire board, with the community. First, just a reminder that we did appoint our initial Board of Directors for the Ironman Foundation, and that first board meeting will be next Wednesday night. So excited to welcome that group and think about what the fundraising efforts they can do for the district would be and what other support that they can offer. I wanted to share with the board an update about Wawa construction that's going in across from Route 11. In speaking with the long-range planning committee, we do, we are not, like, we do not own Route 11, and we do not own State Hospital Drive, so I want to make that clear. But what we will be doing on behalf of the school district is communicating that we're not interested in having a crosswalk from Danville School District property to Wawa. At this point in time, Wawa would like to put a crosswalk across Route 11 to our property. My concerns with that are that they are not changing the speed limit on Route 11, and I do not feel comfortable that we would put a public crosswalk in a place where the speed limit is 55 going to 45. There are not crosswalks at other portions of Route 11, like, there's not one by, like, Sheets to Hunters, that area. I think a crosswalk communicates that that's a safe place to cross. I will not be encouraging any student, and in fact, if it's put in, I'll be putting messages out to families, to coaches, to after-school activities, that we would not feel like that's a safe place for students to cross. It feels similar to the fact that there's a Taco Bell across from the middle school, although it's nice to go to Taco Bell, you need to get in your car and drive there. Not safe to cross railroad tracks and cross that portion of Route 11. So I am working with Brandy Morton, who's the borough manager. She, we have a great working relationship, so kudos to Olive Borough Council, just so we can properly communicate on behalf of the district that we don't want to see that. Their current plans, as they understand them, are to put in a crosswalk, put in a handicap landing pad sidewalk, but then put a retaining wall around the sidewalk, so you technically can't get to the sidewalk unless another sidewalk is built. So it would be a crosswalk to nowhere. But obviously, all of that presents safety concerns, kids climbing the retaining wall, jumping into the crosswalk, trying to cross the street. So just wanted to communicate with everyone that we're communicating that we do not have a desire for there to be a crosswalk. If you go to the next slide, the other thing that we just discussed in long-range planning was the presentation that Mr. Mabish shared last week about just the debt structure here in Danville. He had talked about what our existing debt was, what that means for future borrowing capacity, and how new debt can be funded and what that specifically means here in Danville. So we went over those things in our long-range planning this evening. And then finally, if you go to the next slide, Mr. Ryan, we did just look at those choices. We are going to meet again before next month's Committee of the Whole at 5:00 PM, but at this point, we have eliminated from consideration Choice E, which is a common district campus where everyone would be here in this location where we're at. That is a price tag that is just unsustainable with what our borrowing capacity is. We've also eliminated Choice B, which would be, like, rebuilding the entire middle school on that campus, feeling like that's, although we may, A is still in play, if you will, that we may need to do some improvements to the middle school. B, being a brand-new middle school, did not feel like a direction that the group wanted to go in terms of that physical location. The group at this point does not have a recommendation of A, C, or D. There's going to be further discussion in long-range planning about that. So it's just some highlights from our meeting this evening. Yes, go ahead.
I just want to say something very briefly. So I unfortunately wasn't here for Lance's presentation, but, and unfortunately, my soccer team didn't have a coach, so I missed part of long-range planning. But just looking through the stuff that Lance presented, just to make sure everyone's on the same page and so the public understands what the circumstance is, that right now, we're still, we still have a fair bit of existing debt, right? So we're still paying for the stadium, we're still paying for the auditorium, we're still paying for the Liberty Valley construction, and we're still paying for things at the primary school. And that essentially, we have debt through the fiscal year of 2040, is that right?
It, 2.7 million.
Yes. Okay, so we essentially have a credit card bill, which won't get paid till 2050.
Correct.
All right, just to be clear, all right? And our debt service is five, about 6% of our current budget expenditure.
Correct.
So a good portion of the money goes. So just, I want everyone to know and I want the press to know, so they understand what we're struggling with and what we're dealing with, okay? Legal guidelines, we could potentially take up to $65 million of additional debt as things stand right now.
And Mr. Ryan, if you just want to go back to the last slide, that would help support some of the things that Mr. Green's talking about, too, just, or Dr. Green, excuse me.
But if we took 65 million of debt at this moment, that would put us at the cap of borrowing.
It would.
That would mean there would be no additional room for anything to go wrong, because we could no longer borrow any, another cent. And it would also mean that our debt service would go up quite dramatically.
Yes.
And so for each 10 million borrowed, we're looking at about $500,000 in annual payments.
Correct.
So we would then have, I mean, I could probably do the math fairly quickly, but if we borrowed 65 million, you're looking at about 3, 3.5 million additional payments.
Correct.
So we would have to generate 3.5 million additional-
More dollars every year.
Every year to pay debt service. So our current debt service would actually be close to 6 million, because we're currently paying off. And so by rough estimates, that's about 10%.
We'd move up to more, like, 11 to 12% of a budget, instead of between 5 and 6% of a budget in debt.
So we're starting to look more like our government than like a school. At least we're getting closer.
Correct.
Okay? Because all our debt would be restructured.
Yeah, all our debt would be restructured. We'd be service a year through 2050.
So we're looking at a double whammy. We're not, not only are we not getting a break, or maybe a triple whammy, we're at max borrowing capacity, right? With no room to borrow anything additional, and we have to generate a large amount of additional income that we're not currently generating. So that's fancy words for, we need money that we don't have, right? So the reason I'm saying this is to try to make it as plain as possible to whoever's here, so they understand, instead of technical speak, like, simple is what I'm looking for. Okay? And that we already have an issue that state revenues are unclear and/or going down. So one source of money that we would have gotten may either be disappearing or changing, and that the Cherokee plant in all likelihood, which is a source of tax revenue for us, is going away, right?
Correct.
And that there, who knows what will happen with Geisinger? I mean, even though I would argue that Geisinger doesn't pay the district as much as it should, the leverage that we thought we might have in relation to Geisinger doesn't exist as things stand currently.
They're going to stay categorized as a nonprofit.
Okay.
So it'll be up to their generosity if we got more money.
So just from a practical perspective, because we don't know what's happening with the state, because Cherokee is going away, because we currently don't have additional money from Geisinger, we don't have a good way to generate an additional 3 to 4 million a year, unless we want to decide to raise taxes to the max every single, from here until eternity.
Even that would not, it doesn't generate the kind of revenue that-
I mean, it generates what, an extra 300K a year if we were to do that, or 400K, which isn't enough to-
It's like 200,000 per point increase.
Okay, so, so, I'm just going to call it the way that I see it, then. We don't have any feasible way at this time until state funding is resolved, until we understand what money we'll eventually get from Geisinger of spending 65 million, right? As much as I'd like to put a school behind Liberty Valley, right? We don't have the ability to do that as things stand, right? Okay. So I just wanted to lay that out, so everyone understood what the situation was.
All right, that-
Thank you.
That takes us to the, two slides ahead, Mr. Ryan, thank you. So we're going to move to administrator board reports. I did share this in my weekly update with board members, but just to communicate to the public as well. So we have been using this time for administrators to share kind of happenings of their departments. Board members, you'll consider, continue to receive both electronically and on paper, a board report from all of the administration, all the administrators on the team. But here, in meetings, we're going to have buildings do an update at board meetings, and people in specialty roles, like in curriculum and special education and buildings and grounds, will have items on our Committee of the Whole agenda, since their departments line up with committees. So tonight, we'll hear from high school, middle school, Liberty Valley, primary school, and Head Start. And moving forward, you'll hear topics from Mr. Kissinger in mental health, and Ms. Wenrick and Mrs. Delgado in special ed, or Dr. Reinert in curriculum, or Mr. Rein in technology in an appropriate committee format. So I'll turn it over to Dr. Gump, who will start us off with a high school update.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Neat, appreciate that. Good evening, everyone. I have two brief items to share. First, as we start the school year, please know that our teachers, counselors, and administrators are poring over and analyzing mounds of student assessment data. Over the next few months, we'll be using this data to develop individual plans for students to meet our own local graduation requirements, our ACT 158 state graduation requirements, and to prepare students for numerous assessments ahead, such as Keystone exams and AP assessments. So we look forward to working with Dr. Reinert, our curriculum leads, counselors, and faculty as we dig deep into data to improve outcomes for our students. So we've always looked at data, we want to continue digging further into it. On another note, more of a, like, a district update on the Athletics Hall of Fame, just wanted to say we're making our final preparations for the Hall of Fame induction ceremony set for Saturday, September 20th. Board members, you can find more information about that in your packets this evening. But that said, I just want to share publicly that we're extremely excited to celebrate 15 local legends next weekend at Friday night's football game and then at the ceremony on Saturday.
Thank you, Dr. Gump, and thank you to Dr. Gump and Mr. Albertson for all of their hard work in making the Hall of Fame a reality. So we're really excited for that induction. And if you have, we, board members, we'd love for you to be a part of certainly coming to the football game on Friday night, but also our induction ceremony on Saturday. And if you've not been in the high school lobby, we have a beautiful Hall of Fame wall that's been established. There'll be a place where these folks can be permanently recognized, and we're excited for that. Mr. Hrabi, the middle school.
At the middle school, we finished our beginning-of-year growth assessments. I want to give a big thank you to Dr. Reinert, Zach Nash, and our technology team for being prepared to execute those on the third day of school. It was a big undertaking and it went very, very well. So at this stage, all DMS students are now in the process of being conferenced with individually by their math and ELA teachers. Students are going to be given personalized goals based on how those beginning-of-year assessments, how they performed on those assessments. And then every two weeks, math and ELA teachers will be meeting with us to review progress toward those goals in between each of our five assessments throughout the school year. I also want to give a huge thank you to Kristen Byer and Brandon Long, our reading specialists at the middle school. They worked alongside myself, Mrs. Roberts and Ms. Wenrick to reimagine what we do for reading groups at the middle school. We're very excited that we are going to be able to double our reading intervention outside the regular classroom for students this year. There was a huge lift on their part, there was a lot of assessment data to dig through, a lot of schedule juggling to make that happen, so I just want to publicly say thank you to them for that. Mr. Roberts?
So talking about school community, the middle school implemented a new PBIS reward system this year. Students and staff have really been buying into the new implementation. We've had lessons that have gone very successful on the behavior in the building. We had our first event, which was an outdoor lunch, so students were able to utilize the outdoor pavilion, the playground, and the new hardscaping that was just finished this week. So they were very excited to have that opportunity and use our PBIS points. And we are ahead on planning our first Forge Friday.
Thank you. And Dr. Snover, Liberty Valley.
All right, good evening. I'll continue with what seems to be a common theme, and that is- I'll continue with what seems to be a common theme, and that is data, beginning of the year data. I would like to highlight the time and effort our classroom teachers and our reading specialists have put into dissecting and analyzing a lot of this beginning of the year data, which also includes end of last year data, that we roll in and, and use that as kind of a baseline for where we are starting the school year. So, we've done MAPS assessments, of course, we have spring PSSA data, and very shortly, we'll have PVAS data coming up. So, we're looking at last year's data, we've made, we've looked at the initial math and ELA data reports from our MAPS testing. Our reading specialists have developed reading groups that are already in place, which took a tremendous amount of time and work on, on their part. So, kudos to them. Those are already in place, and they're, they're moving ahead with pull-out reading interventions for students in need. And we are currently refining and putting in place small groups within the classrooms. So, as Dr. Gump mentioned, I look forward to working with Ms. Wenrick and Dr. Reinert and everyone else as we continue to refine the data and make adjustments as more assessment data becomes available. Very important part of the beginning of the year in all of our schools.
Thank you, Mrs. Earp.
Um, at the primary school, we've been focusing on getting our students back into the routine and structure of school. So, we kicked off the year with an exciting assembly where I went over how kids earn train cars, what our expectations are as far as being our best at the primary school. And then, teachers branched out and worked with our kids in various environments throughout the building to practice those expectations. So, they'd visit the cafeteria and the playground, and like to thank the Rikers for borrowing a bus and letting us get on the bus and practice those expectations on the bus as well. And then, we carry that over now into the year, and we're being very intentional with getting train cars to our students and recognizing them for, of course, being their best. One thing that we are focused on this year is tracking that better, so that our teachers are catching all of our students who are doing their best. So, teachers have a goal of making sure that, that the student gets a train car at least once each marking period. So, we, we are tracking all that data to make sure it's being implemented and ensuring that our students are being caught doing their best. Another initiative that we started this year was forming a behavior team that meets weekly. In those meetings, we focus on discipline referrals to ensure that our students are getting the proper supports. We recently met to look at historic data from SDQs to make sure students are in social emotional learning groups. So, we have groups formed based off of need, we have lunch groups formed for students who need, and we have that tier three of students who may need one-on-one additional check-ins and check-outs. Just like everyone else shared, we also just finished our fall diagnostic for our first and second graders. We very quickly got together with the literacy team and generated our service list to ensure that our students are getting picked up for interventions. I would say that I feel like, and I'm sure Nicole can agree, we're starting to see the positive impact of the interventions that we're providing to our students. As our second grade cohort started this year, we, our numbers have dropped significantly as we track them from kindergarten to second grade. So, we'd just like to say kudos to all of our teachers for the hard work and intervention. We also are forming math intervention groups for our most at-risk students. Teachers now have that data in their hands, so they can start the implementation in small groups. We're also looking at that historic data where we, we can see how our kindergartners performed that are now our first graders, and our first graders who are now second graders. We did not have a big slide from last year to this year. So, that puts us in a great position to continue to push our students forward towards success.
Thank you, Mrs. Earp. And just sneak peek at academic affairs portion of our next month's meeting. Some of what they're talking about, about analyzing this beginning of the year data, is we are seeing students, we're seeing the hard work of the last, like, three years truly paying off. We are students, seeing students come to third grade more ready than they've ever been to come to Liberty Valley, with lower numbers of students needing interventions. And so, like, literally seeing the tier one curriculum we've put in place and literacy working, the interventions we've put into place working. The fruits of the labor are here, and so, we will be putting together a presentation about that for next month. And then, Mrs. Marshall, Head Start.
I just wanted to say thank you also to Mr. Riker for serving on our policy council at Head Start pre-K, I think for at least eight years, and just really appreciate your support and guidance for our policy council. Some exciting news is that we have started a new partnership with Tabestry of Health WIC office. Their enrollment numbers in Montour County are not where they need them to be, and so, they approached us to have an onsite office every other month to help our families in Montour County, especially in our program, not have to travel to Bloomsburg to get services. Many of our families do not have necessarily transportation or gas money to get to Bloom, and then do not continue with the WIC benefits that are, they're provided to the children. So, we will be having, and they will be in our conference room every other month where our children can just walk down the hallway and have an appointment rather than miss instruction, and then go back to class. They will be able to get everything that they need right in the office, and the supports that the family need with the food and nutrition support. Well, hopefully, we will be able to see numbers in Montour County increase, and we are really trying to push and support through our families to apply for WIC. So, just exciting to kind of see where the numbers are now, and then hopefully, this partnership will grow with them in Montour County.
Thank you so much. I would just like to, and before I pass the microphone back to Mr. Riker, just thank the administrative team for an awesome start to the school year. Things have gone so smoothly and have been so positive. And it really was, all of the hard work over the summer prepared us to have just an amazing start to the school year. I'd like to thank all of our teachers and staff for their hard work, but we've had, we've just had a fantastic start to the school year and are so thankful to have students back on campus. And back to you for school property and supplies. Oh, I'm sorry, public comment.
So, at this time, this public comment section at this time is for items on the agenda. I know that there are some people here tonight that want to speak about a subject that I know some people in the board want to speak about also, but that is at our open public comment section at the end of the meeting. So, if anybody has any public comments about items on the agenda, we'll take them now at this time. If not, I promise to move through the agenda as fast as we can, because I know there is a few of you here that would like to speak about something, and we're, we would like to hear what you have to say. So, if there's no public comments on agenda items, we'll move on. That'll take us to number six, school property and supplies. Six point one, invoice with Converse Consultants. The board will take action to approve the payment of invoice two-five-one-seven-one-four-one-dash-oh-one-dash-zero-zero-zero-one in the amount of two thousand six hundred twenty-two dollars seventy-four cents to Converse Consultants for professional services from May thirty-first, twenty twenty-five to June thirtieth, twenty twenty-five as presented. A motion and a second, please.
Motion.
Mr. Riker.
Yes.
Mr. Umbriak.
Yes.
Mr. Garman.
Yes.
Dr. Green.
Yeah.
Mr. Gregg.
Yes.
Ms. Patterson. Mr. Riker Jr.
Yes. Take us to number seven, athletics and activities. Seven point one, field trips. The board will take action to approve the September tenth, twenty twenty-five field trip listed as, list as presented. Motion and a second, please.
Motion. Second.
Mr. Umbriak.
Yes.
Mr. Garman.
Yes.
Dr. Green.
Yes.
Mr. Gregg.
Yes.
Ms. Patterson. Mr. Riker.
Yes.
Mr. Riker Jr.
Yes. Take us to item ten, finance. Ten point one is finance report, ten point two is a finance report, ten three is cash receipt, that's a report, ten point four is bills for payment. The board will take action to approve the bills for payment from August seventh, twenty twenty-five through September fourth, twenty twenty-five as presented. You have a motion and a second, please.
Motion. Second.
Mr. Garman.
Yes.
Dr. Green.
Yes.
Mr. Gregg.
Yes.
Ms. Patterson.
Yes.
Mr. Riker. Mr. Umbriak.
Yes.
Mr. Riker Jr.
Obstain. Ten point five, Head Start stipends. The board will take action to approve the Head Start discretionary stipends for the twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five school year as presented. May I have a motion and a second?
Dr. Green.
Sorry, she said Dr. Green, I was...
Dr. Green.
Yes.
Mr. Gregg.
Yes.
Ms. Patterson.
Yes.
Mr. Riker.
Yes.
Mr. Umbriak.
Yes.
Mr. Garman.
Yes.
Mr. Riker Jr.
Yes. That'll take us to personnel, personnel consent items. The board will take action to approve personnel consent items, eleven point two through eleven point one-nine. Please take a minute to review them. If there is any you would like to have pulled out to be voted on, voted on individually, please speak now or forever hold your peace. When you're satisfied with what you're reading, take a motion and a second to proceed.
Motion. Second.
Mr. Gregg.
Yes.
Ms. Patterson. Mr. Riker. Mr. Umbriak.
Yes.
Mr. Garman.
Yes.
Dr. Green.
Yes.
Mr. Riker Jr.
Yes. Take us to number twelve, policy and insurance. Policy and insurance consent items. The board will take action to approve policy and insurance items twelve point two through twelve point seven. Same procedure, read through them. If there's anything you'd like to have pulled out separately, please let me know. If not, I'll take a motion and a second to proceed.
Motion. Second.
Ms. Patterson.
Yes.
Mr. Riker. Mr. Umbriak.
Yes.
Mr. Garman.
Yes.
Dr. Green.
Yes.
Mr. Gregg.
Yes.
Mr. Riker Jr.
Yes. Take us to thirteen, would be transportation. Twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six bus driver lists. Board will take action upon the recommendation of the superintendent to approve the bus driver list for the twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six school year as presented, pending the receipt of all required clearances and documentation.
Motion. Second.
Mr. Riker. Mr. Umbriak.
Yes.
Mr. Garman.
Yes.
Dr. Green.
Yes.
Mr. Gregg.
Yes.
Ms. Patterson. Mr. Riker Jr.
Yes. Take us to item fourteen, are there any board concerns and items for next meeting that we would like to have on the agenda? Oh, I did abstain, didn't I? Oh, did I? I'm sorry, abstain. I have my paper here, sorry.
Okay. I had you marked.
Yeah, you already marked me for that anyway. So, moving along, fourteen, board concerns and items for next agenda. Is there anything that anybody would like to have added to the next meeting agenda?
Do you want me to talk? Or you want me to wait till after public comment?
It's up to you, if you'd like to go ahead.
You're the president, you tell me.
I mean, they, they've been sitting here, so, let's give them the opportunity to speak. So, at this time, we will open up for public comment. I would remind you to please keep it at three minutes. Dr. Nead, you're gonna talk?
Can do that, yep.
Okay. So, whoever would like to come up first, or whoever would like to come up, you can come to the table here in front of us. Please state your name, and, you don't have to give your address exactly, but where you live in the district approximately would be great. And what your comment is about. This time, we'll take the public comments. I guess I don't need that. You guys can all hear me?
Yeah, the, the public can actually hear, so if you could sit down, that would be great.
Yeah, the, these are, these are still...
This is the last...
Put out on, on the internet for people to see, so...
Alright, so, my name's Jason Penny. I recognize a couple of faces in here from when my kids were at Danville, my wife Cara. Just wondering what, I kind of know what the district's thoughts are on the VOTAC funding. And it kind of worries me about the, the split school year thing as far as bus time. You're taking that, that bus time and come away from their, their academics schooling. I know, I know Danville's not so much pushing for it as other districts are. But what, what are your thoughts on, on the splitting of the school, if you can talk about it, maybe you can't?
My first question to you as far as academics, you talking the tech side or your actual academics?
The actual academics.
Okay, so, my first question is, is that was what I'm waiting for. Why people are concerned about academics now? Because just to let you know, at one point last year, they said at twelve percent proficiency in math.
And I, I have some data surrounding this, which I'll talk about. The academics at the VOTAC, not the technical aspect, I have no comment on the technical aspect, and we appreciate all the teachers working in the technical aspect. But, the actual academic side and the services that the VOTAC is providing is woefully below what Danville itself can provide, by orders of magnitude. And unless we think that these kids don't deserve to receive the same education that every other child in Danville deserves to receive surrounding academic subjects, it would be malpractice by this board to continue to allow them to receive that education there without the VOTAC showing any interest in actually approving it. And there has been public comments at other board meetings by teachers who teach those subjects that they have no interest in improving those scores, and that they in fact don't care about the Keystone store, scores of our students, which is a hundred percent unacceptable. I'm happy to go through the whole list of issues that would go along with the VOTAC, and I'm the first person to support a VOTAC education. I think actually, we should have more VOTAC options for our kids, because if you think about in the future, what is going to allow, a lot of these kids earn a great living. It is things that a, a technical education would teach them.
Hands-on training.
Correct.
Yes.
And it is wonderful. I want more people to go into that kind of education. We need people doing that kind of stuff.
I agree.
And so...
I, for one, am a graduate of Columbia, Montour. And, and I don't know the day that you guys do, but I can say, if my kids weren't getting the proper schooling, that their grades would have gone up when they went to the VOTAC. You agree? If it was easier, lower curriculum, I don't see that.
This isn't a, well, we have the data. This isn't a matter of it being easier. We're, I'm, we're not even talking about whether the teachers are, we're talking about teachers teaching to state proficiency.
Proper stuff.
Right. And, and their numbers are abysmal. Once again, this has nothing to do with the technical education. I, I'm not qualified to even comment on the technical education.
And one thing that, that, that's, that people are just missing the whole picture here is that if it's a part-time model, halftime model, this may be, they do academics for a month here, then they're up there for a month. So, that whole extra transportation of what people are visualizing is, is totally cut out of that aspect. We, we haven't even started on the model yet. I mean, I'm not speaking for everybody else. I know that there's been studies that have been done, but I don't think there's going to be one that's going to be done as thorough as I want it, and I think the rest of us want it. We might find out this model provides the information that it's going to stay the way that it is now. It's just, right away, somebody started spoon-feeding the bullshit, and everybody ate it.
I'm not one to listen to rumors. I knew there was, there was stuff in the newspaper, and I figured it was my civic duty to come sit here in front of the school board and listen and see what actually is going on.
We appreciate that.
Yeah, I appreciate that.
Yeah, we appreciate that.
I, I think it's, I think it's important to clarify, I think some of the misinformation that's out there is that there's been a decision that's made about what the right model is. Where we're coming from as a board and as a district is that we want to ensure that, that Danville students get the education, both academically and technically, that they deserve. And we want to make sure that Danville taxpayers are getting the most... and we wanna make sure that Danville taxpayers are getting the most for their money. And so what we are proposing, that has not even been a voting item, because it would actually come out of the JOC first, before districts would vote on it. But what we would propose is a study to evaluate the academic, programmatic, and financial strengths and weaknesses of all technical models across the state. And so then we'd have facts to determine what are the pros and cons of each model, again, both academically, programmatically, that would be things like transportation and space and those kinda things, and financially. So we're just asking to learn more information because there are very limited comprehensive schools in the state of Pennsylvania right now. So the majority of the state does look at part-time models, so there has to be some academic and financial strengths there, but we're not saying that is for sure the answer. We're saying, let's find out information. So I do think there's rumors that have let people jump to conclusions like, oh, how would transportation work and would my child miss out on education? We're not at that point yet. We're at a place of saying, what's actually best for students? So I think what I'd wanna make clear is here in the Danville area school district, we want technical education for our students. The world needs that. That is valuable, and we believe in that. But we wanna make sure that that education is excellent and up to par with what we're doing in Danville for students, because we also believe in our students and want the best for them. So we're just asking for it to be examined, so that we can determine the best path forward, again, for our students and for our taxpayers.
Alright, my three minutes is probably up.
Yeah, we've stolen some of it too, so you're alright.
I just, I wanna ask one thing. Please always keep the kids in your thoughts.
That's our first priority.
Not about building a new school across the road. Just keep the kids in everybody's thoughts.
That's why we're here.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you so much.
Hello. My name is Amanda. Some of you may know me by name, some of you might know me by face. Anybody that has met me will tell you that I am one hundred percent for my kids. I am a two thousand and seven graduate from VOTAC. I did not go to VOTAC until halfway through my freshman year of high school. I was failing three to four classes here at Danville. For the simple fact, in my eyes, and multiple of other children that I have, children, I say children, my age group, that I was made to be outcast. I wasn't in clubs, I wasn't in sports. Ever since I have been going to Danville, that's what I put towards Danville. They're all about their sports. My child is a current student up at VOTAC. He worked his butt off to get where he is. I just want everybody to know that it affected my life. I succeeded way more than I ever thought I would. I probably would still be in school and not even graduated or dropped out if I would've stayed in Danville. I was bullied, my child was bullied, that's why he left. He escaped the school district to go to another one, to start new, to start fresh. He's made friends from all different, all over the place. He is on the football team. He is succeeding in so much that he would not be able to do here. He was failing, because the teachers were not taking the time to help him understand the lesson, help him understand a question or of some sort. I personally have seen it. I know that I've spoke to multiple of these guys back here, that they know that I come in there and I start screaming and yelling, because my kids are my life. I'm asking, from the bottom of my heart, that you guys really consider the fact that we do not take this to half-days. Or at all. I think it's going to jeopardize the education, not only academically and technical, that these students will receive if we change it. My eleven-year-old has had a plan, a dream in his life for the last three years. If you can ask him, he'll tell you. He wants to go and be an underwater welder. At eleven years old, actually this was two years ago that he told me, he was able to tell me he wants to go to VOTAC. He wants to get into welding. He will take any shop that he can get, so he can get any kind of experience that he can get, to then go to the military and become the underwater welder that he wants. At eleven years old, he wants to go to VOTAC. I don't want that to deter him from not going and getting the education academically and technical that he deserves, that he's working his butt off for right now in sixth grade. I guess my other question is, is if this were to happen, right now VOTAC is seniors and juniors have their shops in the afternoon, freshmen and sophomores have them in the morning, they flop. How's that gonna work if they are here? And is the school itself capable of handling another, what, hundred students coming back? I just see the bullying getting worse. I see the education getting worse, because now you're burning out the teachers. You don't have enough, the classes in VOTAC are smaller. The teachers are compassionate. You add another hundred students here to the high school, you're adding more students per class. That's overwhelming the teachers. That's overwhelming the students, therefore they're not going to get the education that they deserve.
The first question I have, what do we average for kids in a classroom? Because up there, there's, I believe, twenty-six, twenty-eight kids in a classroom. I don't think we're much off of that.
The classrooms that my child is in has, does not have any more than probably fifteen students.
Well, I can, because I asked for this information, student to teacher ratio, and I have it. So, maybe your kid's fortunate enough to be in a smaller classroom, but don't sit here and tell me that the numbers are off, because if we have twenty-six, twenty-seven students in a classroom.
I'm not gonna sit here and argue. I came to voice my opinion and giving you my experience as a VOTAC alumni. That's all I was trying to do. I was not trying to come and start an argument.
No, that's fine, and we're all here for that. If there's one person here that wants to see that place thrive, it's myself. But my kid that's in fourth grade, if he said to me, "Dad, I wanna go to VOTAC tomorrow," absolutely not. I'm hoping that when the time comes, that that place is thriving when my kid has the opportunity, so.
I would just wanna name, I really appreciate your passion as a fellow mom. I'm right there with you, and your kids are your world. And I would just wanna clarify, just like we did with the gentleman that was up here before, we're not in a place where we're like voting on a part-time model. We're in a place where we're saying, let's study the models that exist, so that we can make sure we're making an academic, programmatic, and fiscal decision.
And I a hundred percent agree that. I just showed up to show my support.
Thank you.
And for my child, because my child is so worried that he worked so hard to get somewhere, and now it's gonna be ripped from him. That's what he's worried about.
Sure, I think at this point, you know, just mom to mom, I don't think there's anything he needs to be worried about. We're we're steps away from something like that, and I certainly applaud him for already having dreams for the future. That sounds like an exciting, exciting profession.
When it comes down to it, that this is being decided on whether we're doing half-days or whatever, is everybody getting a vote, or is it just the school board? Because in my eyes, I believe the parents and the students that are going to be affected by this should also get a vote in this.
So ultimately, this decision isn't even gonna be up to us. It's gonna be up to the JOC of VOTAC.
Okay.
And the JOC of VOTAC is made up by two members of each sending school. And I think what happened in all this is everybody heard the word "study," and I'm gonna use you as an example, Dr. Green. Everybody heard the word "study," and just for an example, like you go to see Dr. Green. He's a heart doctor. So you go to see him, you're having some health issues. He says, "Well, let's get some blood work done, you know, let's check a couple of things out." And right away, you assume you need triple bypass surgery. No study's done, no test's done, right away you go to the worst-case scenario. That's exactly what happened in this case. We don't know what's gonna come out of this. We have not done anything with it yet. This study could be done, and they could look at it and go, everything up there is fine. Change these couple of things and keep doing what you're doing. We don't know.
Right.
But like Adam referenced earlier, there's been so much crap put out there, some by teachers and counselors at VOTAC, that have been spurring this whole thing, because they don't wanna settle on a contract.
Yeah.
So they keep spurring crap to try to make us look bad. When we're the ones trying to do what's right for the kids.
I, like I said, I was just wanting to come voice my opinion.
Well, I know that, but what I'm saying to you is, is a lot of people are getting upset and worked up about something that none of us know anything about. That's why we're doing this. And we're doing this so everybody can get the information that we need to have to make an informed decision, instead of just creating things that aren't true.
Right.
I do wanna say, in all fairness, there are significant problems at the VOTAC. And part of the reasons to do this is to try to figure out how to address those significant problems, so the kids actually get the education that they deserve. And so, the thing I care about is that we serve every child's need in the Danville district.
Absolutely.
And that means the kids that are in AP, and that means the kids that wanna do underwater welding, which you can earn a lot more than most college degrees if you do underwater welding. Like an amazing, I have patients who do it.
Amazing amount, yeah.
An amazing amount, more than a lot of doctors actually as well.
He did a study on it, like in second or third grade, and it's been his dream ever since.
I think the other part of the problem that's getting mixed up in this, as Daryl has pointed out, is there are currently very contentious contract negotiations going on. And during those contract negotiations, people are being highly unreasonable and overestimating their ability and worth.
Well, I think it was in black and white. I mean, the seven percent that was initially put in the newspaper was a hair high, but again, I mean, it's out there, and for what they're asking for, I mean, you can talk to these people. I mean, nobody's got what they're asking for.
It's not only that, they're not producing results
Exactly.
that justify giving them something like that.
And I feel bad for the tech teachers.
I have their numbers on my screen, which I'm gonna talk about shortly. And if they were producing a product, meaning the student, that was highly academically achieving, it would be a different discussion. If they had their budget under control and weren't constantly coming back to the districts and asking for more money, which then leads us to have to find more money and costs our taxpayers more for an inferior product, doesn't make any sense. So, in part, they've sort of done this to themselves. They've caused the districts from being willing to sort of be okay with the status quo, to being so unreasonable that the districts are now questioning whether there might be a better model. And that's what's led to this whole thing. So, if you wanna look for someone to blame, and I'm gonna say this very plainly.
I'm not looking to blame anybody.
It is not the districts, it is the way that the teachers are negotiating that have led to this.
I'm not trying to blame anybody. Like I said, I wasn't coming here to put blame on anybody. I wasn't coming to do anything but share my experience and voice my child's concern, being a former or a current student.
We will do everything we can to make sure that your child's experience is the best experience we possibly can get for them. And we will not forget the struggles that you went through and your child has gone through.
Thank you so much.
One comment on that. It'd be interesting to see what programs we're talking about actually work. Because if a child at a young age decides they wanna learn a trade, I would think that their focus would be on that aspect of their education. It would be less of a focus on their academic side. So, to determine what programs actually, how do they get kids interested in the academic portion of it? When their focus, when their primary focus is on learning carpentry or learning whatever.
Well, I believe there's state requirements.
The state has requirements for graduating from high school, and that involves passing the Algebra, English, and Biology Keystone exams.
Yeah, I understand that. But I'm saying, what I'm saying is, if a young person is focused on one aspect of their education and less focused on another aspect of it, what programs actually work? How do they make it work? That they're interested, that do well in the academic side?
I would say that that's the responsibility of an educator to motivate students to do that. We certainly have students at Danville High School that have specific careers in mind, that don't necessarily, in their mind, require Algebra or English, but our teacher's job is to motivate them, because that kind of basic knowledge is what the state has determined every graduate deserves in Pennsylvania to function as a citizen.
I understand.
Mr. Moser.
Hi, Jason Moser, live in the borough. You ask generally, I don't wanna give an address. First of all, I find it interesting, you know, and I hope that parents who are here, students who is here, they do not feel, they should not feel attacked for being passionate about their school. I think that's important to think about the context of everything that those students and families go through every day. I find it telling, though, that there are no representatives from VOTAC sitting in the boardroom this evening when they have encouraged parents and families to go and raise concerns about how the sending districts are trying to kill VOTAC essentially. Because that is not the case in my experience in following this story. Vocational education, I heard Dr. Green mention it, is critically important. I don't think that there is a doubt about that here. However, simply raising questions about the model of the delivery, the results tendered, in all aspects, not just Keystone's, but I would say academic growth as well. I'm curious to see what their P-VOS scores are, as well as the NOCTI scores, are all important components to measure VOTAC's success. In addition, asking questions about the financial efficiency does not mean opposition to vocational education. When that is suggested, it is a logical fallacy in the form of an either-or. Just because you ask questions does not mean you are opposed to something. This is, quite frankly, an obtuse argument at best and deceptive at worst. There's a lot of propaganda that comes out every so many years, and this is the same MO, quite frankly, that VOTAC has done for my twenty years living in this region. Education has certainly entered a new realm in the twenty-first century. School choice is in one form or other here to stay. This means that all schools need to adapt and consider ways to transform their practices. This includes all of the sending schools, and by extension, Columbia Montour. VOTAC is, after all, an extension of the sending schools. After all, we hear this every year at budget season, don't we? Perhaps a half-day option is not the best option. But we do not have a clear answer unless if we do a comprehensive study. It is imperative that a comprehensive study is done by a third party. Neither the sending schools nor the VOTAC itself should be responsible for this. The sending schools, quite frankly, need to manage their own districts. There's a lot that that entails. In addition, the VOTAC should not be involved in running a comprehensive study of whether or not they are running an efficient operation. That would be akin to Mr. Mabus being asked to perform the financial audit of the Danville area school district. It is a responsibility of the sending districts, in my opinion, to best protect their investments. That is all of the taxpayers. There could be redundancies. We could be paying for double services. We could be paying for things that, quite frankly, the sending districts could offer just as well and perhaps more efficiently. Perhaps not. I don't know. And quite frankly, I agree with something Mr. Reichert said. I don't think any of us know yet until there is actually a real, objective study done. Personally, I would like to see both the comprehensive and half-day option as choices. If a student wants to attend VOTAC in a comprehensive setting, I think we should, we should absolutely consider that as part of the model. But, we also need to consider that there could be half-day options that could be very efficient. Students could receive the incredibly necessary and important vocational education and training that our workforce direly needs, and potentially still be part of their home sending district. Doing a study does not mean an opposition in summation to vocational education, even if some do things like post on Facebook and tell people mistruths, misdirections, and quite frankly, propaganda on social media. Thank you.
Is there anybody else? Like to come up and speak?
Good evening. Jonathan Ryan. Member Danville area, you know, community, township, Liberty Township resident. welding instructor at Columbia Montour Tech. So, you know, when I, when I left this school district, middle school, being able to tour the school up there and being presented with opportunities, I felt like that was, that was the way to go. You know, here to get anybody riled up. Voice my concern, school. I know it as, the way I do the school, learned a valuable trade, had a rewarding career, and now am able to serve. Taking over from my instructor, it was a great honor, you know, to do those things and having students pursuing, you know, a teaching career today. Vocational education. Humbling. I know there's, I know there's, probably is issues. Thing, the thing that I worry about the most would be the you tried very hard to work together, academically and vocational, incorporate a lot of, lot of that curriculum, make the connections for everybody, the, the scores being for best on a daily basis. Seize those goals. Yes. Glad to see that you guys value the education, you know. Need a Kathy Half to fill the gaping hole at the end of the community. Things are expensive these days, so hopefully one of these guys jumped to the challenge eventually, but you know, it's vocational education, Mr. Green said it himself, it's, you know, valuable career, you know, to any field, whether it's nursing, welding, automotive. Lot to be gained from it. You know, I really ask onto it that, that model, that cohesive model that we have is.
I'll be quite frank with you. I think if you could bust up the clique that's amongst a few of the academic sides, I think ninety-nine percent of your problems would go. Without mentioning any names, I'm sure you're obviously, probably know who I'm referencing to, but there's a few there that when I was asked to have the opportunity to sit on that committee, I was all for it. That place is nothing but a miserable nightmare when I go to those meetings for the few individuals there. It, it's totally backwards when you have a group of academic teachers that want to run the school. That's what your administrators are for. I'm not there, but from what I'm seeing, it's totally backwards and that's where I have a huge problem at. So, and again, I'm, I'm all for it. I wanna see that place thrive. Hopefully, ten, fifteen years from now, we can offer more than what's offered there now. So I just, that's the way I feel and until something changes up there, my tune's not changing.
I certainly thank you for your service to our students and all of the students at Tech. And I think you've heard from the board tonight and I certainly want to express, we are strong believers in technical education. And so any of the discussions we're having and every thought and decision we're making, we're thinking about students and making sure that they still have technical opportunities. And again, we're just at a place of looking for data, not deciding on a model.
Yeah, and, and, and from your guys' end of it, the tech side of things, I, I always hear nothing but positive things. Always. I've never had anybody come to me with any negative feedback.
I'll be honest, Adam, it's, you know, they're, we're never, we're never, you know, I, I can't say I've, I've met a teacher that's always punching it out of the park every, every year, you know, every year getting reevaluated, you know, NOCTI's redoing their reevaluating the, the weights of, of student S scores and I'll be honest with you, I was just happy they took three points off of my, you know, advanced competency. I mean, my kids had to score basically almost and I don't know how many of you have ever told it before, but I wake up, I wake up every day and do that job and there's some days like that's my excuse or something. So I'm, I'm not perfect and I don't, I've never met anybody that says they are and if they do, they're wrong.
I'm not saying I'm perfect neither and I'm not, and I'm not knocking.
What I'm, what I'm getting at is these poor kids are trying their best on that, on that one day and they're being subject to a, to a criteria that's, that's held pretty high. And they might get competent, they might get basic, but a basic, you know, a basic or, you know, hopefully not below basic, but still a competent or an advanced on a NOCTI score is the only part of the data that shows because they don't count a basic.
We're not criticizing vocational at all.
But I'm just trying to explain, because I, I heard the Keystone and I heard NOCTI and I just, you know, it's humbling to, to hear a kid break down over, you know, getting beat up over a score of this and that and it's just like football. You know, you got, yep, they may have got a point, but you know, we gotta brush it off and we'll get them the next one and, you know. And, yeah.
Do you, do you personally feel that you got an adequate education both on both sides?
Oh, absolutely, but the thing, the thing about.
What's different about when you went through as opposed to now?
We weren't held to the Keystone criteria. When, when we went, when myself and others went through the schooling, we weren't held to that Keystone that, that we are now, which makes it a little, I say it was, it was, we try to make it cohesive, but back then it was, it was just totally intermeshing because it was so much easier to teach, teach to the trade. Where now we have to, we have to more so teach to, you know, the Keystone. And, you know, when, when you look at the block wall and you make that in comparison to X and Y, you can look at those blocks and count the blocks, you know, every eight inches is so many, so if X is this and Y is that, you're, you can count, you can formulate that into an algebraic equation. But when, you know, when you're, when you're getting hit with that, kinda hard to convey that into every lesson every day and make it, make it a nice cohesive lesson. The way it was for me, it was just so much more easily digestible. And, yeah, maybe that's what, maybe that's what has our hands tied. But I feel like we try to do a great job of working together with the, you know, the, the math department and the English department. Should I have sections of the Reader Digest that we go through and try to incorporate the word of the day or, you know, to tighten our, you know, vocabulary and make us sound. That answer your question?
How would you change it, if you could change it?
Man, great question. I don't know how. I don't know how you could change it because really, I mean, you guys, us, we're both tied to state funding and state funding comes from the Keystone. See with that, you guys, I, I heard you guys need money and, right, we're all in the same boat. How do we fix it?
Yeah.
When the states, when the states got our hands tied. I feel for you guys too, you know, but I just, I just don't wanna see anything bad come from just fighting every day for this to succeed.
I don't think there's a person in here that could argue that.
The problem is the way that both it's been managed and what's currently being asked for and the results that are being produced are all substandard. And so we all hear your emotion and we hear what's important to you. But I'm about to give some pretty substantial data, both on the financial front and on the academic achievement front, that this is not something that we can just sort of say, oh yeah, it's okay. So I, I hear what you're saying, that something has to change. And with the financial condition that your institution is in and the results that are being produced on the academic side, coming in and thinking that you're going to get a seven percent raise, blows my mind. No, but it's all tied in together. See, so this is the issue. So I, I'm gonna pause for a second because my intention isn't to beat up on you. I would be delighted if any of my kids decided to be a welder. I love welding. I think it's amazing. And I think to be frank, that the trades have a much better future than a lot of the sort of traditionally more college-bound positions. Because a lot of stuff is gonna be replaced by new technology in that I'm always gonna need someone who knows how to work on my HVAC. I'm always gonna need someone who knows how to weld, to do a beautiful weld. I, I'm always gonna need someone to do a million different things that require the physical presence of a person with deep knowledge of the task and amazing skill, right? And I think the future is bright for people who are doing that. I think it's the exact opposite of the perspective that most people take, that no, the kids shouldn't do that. They should all go to college and do this and that. I think that's a terrible idea. I, I think there's genuine money and happiness to be had doing the things that you guys do. But the question is, the way it's being done there, I know from your perspective and your box that you see, you know, the kids struggling and you wanna see them succeed. And you kinda see them as ki- your kids, right? That you want them to, to grow and be successful in the world. We do too. But unfortunately, we're now in a position where we see a much bigger set of problems that extends beyond that and problems that are hurting kids in ways that have nothing directly to do with you, but you're an institution which is doing those things to those kids. And so I, I mean, I will present what I have to present. I wanna do you the respect of allowing you to say whatever you wanna say. But unfortunately, it's not as clean-cut as us just saying.
Well, I mean, once again, I'm fully in support of it. I thank you because again, you're the only individual from up there that had
The guts.
The guts to show up here.
Says a lot about your character.
No, I'm gonna say it. I said it and I'm not taking it back. I appreciate it. I'm, I'm fully supportive of it. I appreciate the rest of yous coming because again, it's like everything else. They were gonna come and bombard this place and they're gonna bombard everywhere else. We only have a few individuals, so I appreciate all of you taking the time to come here and I hopefully, when you leave here, it's a peace of mind knowing that we are a hundred and ten percent in support of it, so.
Your, your kids would probably do well no matter where they went. Yeah, that matters.
Have parents that love and support them, yes. Well, well, hopefully you've heard just very clearly from the board that there is sincere support for vocational education in Danville. And we are just looking for more information to make sure kids are getting what they need and taxpayers' money is being used correctly. We just want more information, but there's a sincere support of technical education. So I hope people are understanding. That's how we feel as an administrative team. That's how we feel as a board. The students at, the students at VOTEC really matter to the board. And thank you again for, for coming and being with us this evening.
Let's hear some data.
I know you're excited. So I, I, I'm gonna say a few things and the reason I'm saying this is not only for the public, so the public understands what the situation is. I deeply resent the fact that the, there are people over there who are weaponizing their children and families essentially against the sending districts. I have not heard a single word from any of the sending, sending districts that they're against VOTEC education. In fact, all I hear from the sending districts is that they fully support it and want it to be as good as possible and that they are looking at the same data that I'm looking at. And I'll, I'll be clear again. Look, I'm, I didn't do, I know, I know how to weld poorly. I love doing it. Yeah, and, and I'm terrible at it. I'll be honest. I, you, you would fail me probably. But I love it. I took shop classes in high school. They were some among my favorite classes to take. I didn't need to. I took them electively because I enjoyed it. I thought it was awesome to build stuff. And so I will tell you, I, I personally, and you've heard me say it earlier, I fully support a technical education, high-quality technical education. In fact, I think we should be sending more kids to do that and encouraging them to because, you know, instead of, not that there's anything wrong with working at McDonald's, but instead of working at McDonald's, if you can learn a set of skills and be really good at it, you have a great living ahead of you. And you might have a business and, and you might have something that can lead your kids inheriting something that's a lifetime job for them. And in fact, I'll, I'll tell you on my wife's side, that's exactly what her father did. So I just want that to be clear before I go into this. Just so everyone understands, there is about eighty-four vocational schools, public schools in PA, okay? And it services almost thirteen thousand students, so this is not a small thing in PA, okay? A lot of schools in PA, almost two thousand, less than that, have some sort of program for vocational tech within them, okay? Our VOTEC, separate VOTEC, is only one of three in the state that acts that way, okay? So this is not a common model. I just want you to understand that. So out of eighty-four vocational schools, there are only three that provide both the academic, meaning algebra and things like that class, and the vocational, all right? So this is a rarity, all right? A few things about finances, okay? So the VOTEC school has on average asked us for a five to six, asked the sending districts for a five to six percent increase of the amount of money we send them on average. To compare that with Danville does in-house, we are four percent or less. Meaning they ask us for more money every year than we get for the students that we have here internally, okay? So they are also currently using their fund balance to support their budget. Meaning the money that they're supposed to have as a reserve in case something goes wrong or they need to do a project or something big, they cannot keep that fund balance because their budget is so bloated. They have to use their fund balance in order to support their yearly budget. Danville itself, thanks to the fiscal responsibility of many people who contribute to it, has millions in fund balance that we hung on for emergencies and doing things that we need to do, okay? The fund balance projection for the VOTEC is in three years, if nothing changes, they will have thirty-seven thousand dollars in their fund balance. That's not even considering teachers who are currently asking for six, seven plus percent raises, which these sending districts, if were agreed upon, would now have to carry that balance which is higher than what we gave our teachers when we negotiated them. And our teachers are meeting a high standard, as I'm about to show you in a second, okay? So just to give you a, a little bit of reiteration, oh, on top of that, despite the fact that they have to use their fund balance in order to support their budget, they have been adding teachers, which is not fiscally responsible. While Danville, in order to maintain fiscal responsibility, reduced twenty-three staff positions in two years through attrition, not firing, allowing people to retire and do other things in order to maintain fiscal responsibility and responsibility for the taxpayers. So what we're currently being asked right now, if nothing changes, like if there's no contract with the teachers, is that no contract with the teachers, is that the sending districts are asked for a six percent increase every year, them spending their savings account because they can't balance their budget in a way that is sustainable, and on top of that, continuing to hire even though they don't have the money to hire people. So, they are directly putting a burden on the sending districts in order to provide you what I'm about to show is a substandard academic education, okay? So, we are fiscally responsible in Danville, we try to respect our taxpayers and make sure that we are not placing an undue burden on our taxpayers. In fact, we may not be able to build a new building this district in fact needs because there is no way to do it in a fiscally responsible manner, and there is no way to do it fairly to our taxpayers, okay? And you currently have negotiations going on where teachers are asking for ridiculous amounts of money, which does not exist, and are not producing the results they're supposed to be producing. So, let me get to what I mean by that, not producing the results that they're supposed to be producing. And I want the press to understand this, and I want the public who are listening to understand this, okay? Algebra I, provided by the VOTEC, twenty-two percent Keystone performance. Danville's sixty-five percent. Biology, these are the requireds that they have to pass no matter what they do, okay? Biology, thirty percent at the VOTEC. Danville, sixty-three percent. English, twenty-seven percent at the VOTEC. Seventy-three percent at Danville, okay? So, unless we think those kids are not capable of producing the same results that we produce with kids in district, the VOTEC is failing them. And I'm not gonna say that. I'm not gonna say the kids aren't smart enough to get the exact same results that we get in Danville. I think that's ridiculous. And on top of that, we have teachers from the VOTEC saying they don't care about that and that they're not gonna do it, they're not gonna work to improve those things. I think that makes the sending districts have to seriously reconsider what we're doing there, and whether the right model is for the VOTEC to provide the academic portions in addition to the vocational portions. On top of all that, I'm just gonna put it out there, Danville High School, where are these kids come from? Twenty-fifth in PA, U.S. News and World Reports. We're doing great things with kids of all ability levels, great things. Our graduation rate is ninety-five percent in district, all right? VOTEC, not in the top five hundred in PA. None of the academic stuff they're producing is in the top five hundred, all right? And I just told you what the Keystone's were. So, I think we've been very polite in a lot of ways in saying that we, we don't know what the problem is, okay? That is true. We don't directly, we don't know what the solution is, let me put that, we don't. We don't know what the solution is to do things at the VOTEC to make it better and keep the model that currently exists, we don't know if the solution is to go part-time like the entire rest of PA does. But what we do know is what the VOTEC is actively doing, both financially and from an academic perspective, is not acceptable for a Danville student. And I will not accept that. I will not accept giving those kids that are going to the VOTEC a substandard education when I can do it at home, cheaper, and better. And when you compound that with teachers who are actively increasing the magnitude of the problem and think they deserve raises bigger than the teachers that I have in district who are actively succeeding, I think that's ridiculous. And you guys are lucky, I will be very honest, that I am not on that negotiating committee and that I'm not serving on the VOTEC, because I would lose my damn mind on you. And that's not to say you're not providing a great vocational education, I'm sure you are, not to say your kids aren't having a great experience, I'm sure they are. But that is not the marker of success here. That's a piece of it, we care about that, we want kids to have that feeling and not lose things that are important to them, but we have clear evidence both financially and academically that that model, right now, as it stands, is failing. And once again, this decision is out of my hands because I know what I would do if I was in charge here, which I'm not, but this is what the districts are looking at. And to have people lie, lie about what we're doing and what's happening at the VOTEC is So, I can't be any clearer than this, and I'm sure I'm gonna get attacked in public for it, that's fine, I don't care. I'm sure people who don't bother to listen to this and actually understand that there's a reality here will attack me, I don't care. We are not doing what we should for these kids. And this board, I think I'm okay saying this, wants the best for these kids. Every one of these guys, when I've listened to them give speeches about coming on the board or running for office, the first word out of their mouth is they want what's best for kids. The first word out of the administrator's mouth is that they want what's best for kids. This is not what's best for kids.
Anybody else?
Better hurry up because the wind's almost out of the sail.
Oh, I think it's going. There's a reason I was Colorado CX debate champion.
So, again, those of you who came out tonight and spoke, thank you. Adam and I caused a big fury the other week in the paper about calling people out for not coming to the meetings, so glad to see that you came out and shared your opinions with us tonight, we all appreciate it. On that note, we are going to go to executive session to discuss personnel...
Personnel matter and a legal matter.
Personnel matter and a legal matter. The rest of you are free to go, and we will see you next month.